Good evening, this is the Carver Planning Board meeting of November nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. If we could please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under new business tonight, we have a sign permit for Cornerstones, ninety-three North Main Street.
I can inform you, they were on the agenda and we had their packet and I got a call today from Sign by Designs and they're gonna withdraw for the time being. They're gonna do this, um, this was a directional sign and they wanna wait till the spring. They're not here.
All right, uh, under, uh, new business, we have a minor modification for Timeless Stoneworks on three sixteen Tremont Street.
Brian Grady from GAF is here. In your packet, while Brian sets up, you'll see a introductory letter, minor, minor, minor modification, site plan application, a rendering of the building, and I believe you have some smaller and bigger plans available to you.
Evening, thank you. Care for Timeless Stoneworks, I'm sure you're familiar with the property and the business down at three sixteen Tremont Street. Uh, they've been, uh-
Excuse me, could you just give me your name?
Sorry, Brian Grady with GAF Engineering.
Thank you.
This business goes back to, I think, oh eight or oh nine, we originally permitted this before you. And what they're looking to do with this minor modification is directly behind the existing building, fifteen feet behind it, they want to construct a sixty by sixty foot addition. This'll be another Morton building, as you see in the rendering, it'll look exactly like the, uh, structure that's there in shape and color, um, and materials. And what this building is for is, uh, storage of product, uh, the slabs. They also have some quartz product that really does, uh, needs to be stored inside. It can't be stored outside like the granite slabs or the marble slabs. So they need indoor storage for that, uh, to get it out of the, the weather and, and direct sunlight. Uh, so that's all that this is for. All the manufacturing and assembly occurs inside the existing building. So overall, the, this new structure will be three hundred and seventy-six feet from the street line of Route fifty-eight. It'll be seventy-four feet, uh, from the nearest, uh, property line to the north or to the bottom of the plan as you're looking at the plan. And the building will be served by electric and it'll have radiant heating in the slab. But other than that, the intention is just to have it for storage. And if I can answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? You just gonna, uh, store the granite slabs in there? Is that all or is there, what other materials are gonna be stored in there, do you know?
Oh, whatever products that they, you know, granite, marble, they have, like, the man-made quartz is really what needs to be inside 'cause that doesn't weather, the granite and the marble.
Oh, so it's just the, the stone itself then?
Right.
Okay.
There'll be no adhesives, just slabs or?
The slab products, right. All the manufacturing occurs in the other building where they use those.
Okay, but you won't be storing any, any type of adhesive or any chemicals or anything like that?
No.
And you also have a, uh, a tight tank I see there, is that for a?
Well, the, um, as required by the plumbing inspector, uh, these slabs will be brought into the building with a forklift. So as part of the plumbing code, you know, if you're parking vehicles in a building, you require an oil/gas separator, trench drain oil/gas separator. Uh, so we've shown that, we may be requesting a waiver on that, uh, from the State Board, because it's, there's no parking of vehicles in there, it's just the fork truck goes in there, drops the product and goes back out. But we're showing it for now.
This is a separate, do you, Mr. Chairman, this is a separate building? What's the spacing between the buildings?
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet. Is that run by the, uh, chief, fire chief?
Not yet.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it has.
Yes.
And comments from the fire chief? Was he okay with it or was he looking for anything?
No, he came down with the fifteen-foot separation between the buildings.
And we're just figuring that this is a minor modification, Jack? Is that what we're looking at?
I, I may, I kinda suggested that to Brian, uh, knowing what we've done with Reddington Gas and, um, a couple other Reed Custom Soil to a lesser degree, it's very similar, it's actually smaller than Reddington Gas. Um, I thought that was the right direction, at least to start in. Um, I had some questions myself, I think the distance was important to know. I think there's the issue of, is he gonna need a bathroom? I don't think so because the distance is so close. Uh, but if he did, he'd have to deal with the septic and that kinda stuff. Once maybe you get done and get some answers today, we could deal with it like we did with Reddington Gas and distribute these to, um, the public safety departments and the Board of Health, maybe have a site visit and then come back here in two weeks and, and hopefully approve it.
Thanks, thanks, Jack. At this stage, I don't, I don't really have any questions. Just first time seeing it, so I'd like to digest it a little bit. And I, I know that we're gonna do a site visit anyways, so take a peek at it. And then my concern is just from the public safety issue.
If, if you recall, if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, the fire department always wants three sides accessible and it seems like it is. Uh, the fifteen-foot, I, I don't know, there must be some minimum standard they, they have as well. And are they, they are connected in some way? You can have a canopy or something?
That's the intent, they will be connected in some fashion, just like a roof overhang, canopy, extension of the roof to connect them, not with the walls, but some sort of roof structure.
Just for some protection from the elements a little bit, so you can run back and forth, yeah. You know, it remind, the canopy notion in two separate buildings reminds me of crop production services, reminds me of what we tried to do with Norfolk Power, ways of getting around certain, not getting around, but, you know, ways to, um, to build it at, uh, more economically.
I haven't been to this site, but I, I see there's an office in the front, I haven't been to this business. And there's this building that's in front of the proposed building, i- is that a storage building or is that, uh?
The Live Central Building, yeah. That's where the manufacturing and the finishing of the, the slabs and the granite occurs.
Okay, but anybody that wanted to, uh, purchase anything would just, as far as they would, just go to the office?
They would go to the office in the front, yeah.
Okay, so that building there, none of that is really open to the public?
Right, the, the customers will walk out back to view the slabs and choose their slabs, but, uh, the office is where they would go primarily.
Anybody else have any questions? Maybe we could, uh, if you could, Jack, you know, run this by, uh?
I'll give it to Public Safety and the Board of Health and maybe we can schedule a, a site visit.
Time for a site visit.
Monday or Tuesday of next week, does that work?
Tuesday, not Mondays.
Tuesday's no good for me.
And then it's Thanksgiving. We could, y- you know, the next meeting's the third, we could do it on Monday, the second. I'll have all the comments by then as well, does that work?
All right, you can go down on Monday and I can just shoot down, I'm familiar with the location and I can go down on my own.
How about the twenty-sixth then, at four?
The twenty-fifth, you mean?
Twenty-fifth, I'm sorry. So November twenty-fifth at four, is that okay?
That works, sure. You okay with that?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm familiar with the location, I'll go down.
Um, make a motion to, um, set the site visit for Timeless Stoneworks for November twenty-fifth at four o'clock?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'll distribute the plans to Public Safety and Board of Health, we'll have the site visit on the twenty-fifth and then it's a minor modification, so on the third we'll, um, hopefully bring it to a vote if we can get everything addressed. Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds like a plan, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, can I get a P, did you send me PDFs of this?
I did.
I thought so, I can do that.
Thank you.
All right, under old business tonight, we have a sign permit for Carver Gas, two forty-nine, uh, Tremont Street.
Yes, we have Amit's mother here again, we're blessed, I can tell. You know, we had a little confusion here, we had the tax issue, that's been resolved and then, as you know, Amit came in and he wasn't on the agenda, so, um, and then, uh, Amit's mother came in, but we didn't have a sign. Well, now we have the sign, we have Amit's, we have Amit's mother here and the, there's only one sign and it's gonna go on the island where, um, Tremont and South Carver, uh, South Main Street.
The Triangle Island?
Yes. That's it. And it's three square feet, three square feet. Do we have the applications, Joe?
Yes.
I only had one question through you, Mr. Chairman, to Jack. Um, maybe it's a question with a follow-up of direction. You say that this is gonna go on the island down at fifty-eight and, um, Tremont?
Correct.
Do we check with, um, DPW?
The interim director?
Yeah, um, I think it might be an idea when we start looking at some of these places for directional signs that we at least inquire with them.
Okay.
Whether or not it's a good place, it would be a problem with them or what have you, I don't know if they use it for snow storage or whatever, I just think it's a good idea.
Make that as a condition. John Woods, you want, the interim?
Other than that, I don't have a problem with it, I think it's great that we, you know, try to help the businesses out, so that's my opinion.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I'm all set, thank you.
Nope. How, is it gonna be mounted? The sign, how's the sign gonna be mounted?
It's gonna be on a metal post.
Just a metal post?
Yep, I talked to his, her son today.
All right. And what's the sign to be made of? It's just a?
Don't know. Is it on the application?
Nope.
Maybe that's another condition. We've had some communication issues, but I think we can get there. I'll, I'll check with John Woods that this location's approved and I'll fill that in with the, what it's made of.
'Cause you want something that's gonna be permanent and durable, yeah? Or you're gonna hit, you're gonna have?
Signed by design. Company's doing this.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, I talked to Peter today, he came into my office, he's been out, out of state, but he did tell me he did this little markup. I will talk to Peter and get the right materials.
What's that?
If I may ask, does he have direct questions for the chair? It's gonna go right in that triangle, are there others?
Yes.
Signs in that triangle?
There's a camp, Miles Standis sign there, there's a, um-
Are they all on the same post or I'm trying to mean?
No, I don't know that for sure. Don't know. I know that, um-
I mean, I don't want the island to become a, uh-
Little smokehouse has a sign there.
A little, uh, community there just to put all posts with signs on it.
Well, then we get back to the question, I know the redevelopment authority was working on, um, some kind of homogenous sign.
BDC has tried it before, this one's tried it before.
We've tried many ways, you guys tried it many before you got, except Will was on the board, but it got shot down. I know what the question is, I don't have the answer until someone is willing to pursue it.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the directional sign, um, with the following conditions for, um, the Carver Gas. Condition number one, it's to be located on Route fifty-eight and Tremont Street in the, um, in that-
Island.
Island area, um, as long as we check with, um, and approve by the DPW.
Interim Superintendent, yep.
Excuse me, also, uh, they require to have a building permit?
No, don't believe so, but maybe put that in there as a precaution.
And also a, um, the signs to be constructed by, um-
Signs by designs.
Signs by designs with normal standards, metal posts with an all-weather sign.
Mm, perfect.
So we have a motion?
Second.
You have a second? Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, nice to see you. Sends his mother, see? More people should do that, send their mother.
It just works better that way. All right. Uh, next, under old business, we have a minor modification for Reddington Gas, it's a continuation of three twelve, uh, Tremont Street.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, we had a site visit and I did distribute the plans in your packet. You'll see a letter from the Board of Health that he has approved the Title V's, um, septic system and he has no further issues. I also got a email from the new administrative sergeant, Sarmento, um, and it's cute, she said, uh, "Thank you for forwarding the copy of the plans for construction of the shed, the plans look fine to me and of course I have no experience in these type of matters, but I didn't realize so much detail went into simply building and storage." So we, we're training, yeah. And then lastly, um, we did get a, some comments from the fire department, which I don't think I had a chance to share with Brian yet, I just got these late this afternoon. And essentially, he's fine with it when they go into the building permit stage, he does wanna deal with, um, uh, fire prevention regulations, but he did wanna make sure that the proposed driveway is constructed of all-weather material suitable for truck traffic. And I'll make sure you have that letter. Again, I just got it. And also I see that Kathy included a photo, I know Mrs. Hanlon couldn't make the site visit, but I know you were worried about visibility from the street and you can't, you can't see it, it's pretty far back there.
Uh, so what is, did you plan on doing something with the driveway out there? Is, uh, can, can you work with that, putting something down?
Um, I hate to interrupt you, but this is a different case and for the viewers at home and the residents, I know who you are, but could you both introduce yourselves again, please?
Sure, sorry for that, Brian Grady with GAF Engineering and Kevin Reddington.
Thank you.
So, uh, that, that'll work?
Yes.
We can do something with that?
The whole backyard there, pretty much in front of the building and all around it is gonna have the recycled asphalt. There's a, there's a good road base.
Okay.
So the trucks can turn around and stuff like that.
And that was all right with, uh, DPW or the fire department, uh, that, that type of surfacing?
It's all in here.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I don't have a problem with it, I think, um, we went through pretty much everything that we needed to go through.
Everything from the fire department has been completed?
Yes, the bu, other than, uh, the fire prevention regulations, that's during the building permit stage when, when the, they bring in, for the building permit, they'll sit down with the, with the, uh, building commissioner and Brian or the architect, I don't know if there is a, if, if there even is one, and they'll go through, you know, where, where to put the fire extinguishers and everything else that they have to do, the exit lights, it's really not a planning board issue.
So I think we're all, we're all set with this, we did do the site visit, we saw that the building was far back, it's all graded in that area anyway, so, and then we did, uh, present this to all the departments for them to take a look, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, um, minor modification for Reddington Gas as presented.
Have a motion in a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
What's that? Absolutely, we'll email it to you. Actually, I'll tell you what, excuse me, you can have them all. We've got them electronic. You got one more.
All right, the next, under old business, is Aunt Steph's Doggy Daycare, it's a continuation for the annual review. If, uh, Jack, would you?
Yeah, I can introduce this a little bit, at the last meeting, again, this is the annual review or the first review, um, you had asked both, um, the one neighbor and Aunt Steph to kinda tell us what you want, so to speak. I'm gonna, I know I've emailed these to you, I'm just gonna paraphrase it. The, um, with Aunt Steph's, she's asking, um, that the condition regarding refuse, where you're, you're required, uh, twice a week, that since she's only generating a quarter of a bag of trash, that that be looked at and may be modified. Also, from the Abutters, the Deggens, you'll see, um, various conditions that they comment on regarding, and they feel are violations. I don't know how much detail you wanna get into this, Mr. Chairman, and then there were a couple of emails, I, I was out of, out of the office 'cause of a family matter, but I did get back in today and, um, there were one email from the neighbor and then a follow-up. I, I, I'll let you deal with this one, I, I don't know where you wanna go. I mean, I think they, again, the issue is you gotta, this is your yearly, your first review, you've never done one of these before, granted. You have the choice of, okay, everything's fine, we're gonna keep it the way it is, you can modify it, but again, if you start modifying it, and I'm gonna try to advise you, if you start modifying it and it starts getting broader or changing the direction, then I may suggest that you open it up and have us another public hearing in the whole nine yards. Or you could consider revocation of it and then you absolutely would have to go through the whole nine yards. So something, there seems, again, to be your options.
And, and what was the, uh, I know, uh, one of the, the only condition that we had set previously, that wasn't being followed was the trash and, and what, what was said by the Board of Health?
Uh, well, I did, I, I don't know if it's in the packet here, um, there was an email, um, sent to me by the Deggens, this is right before I went away, um, about, um, that, I'm gonna paraphrase 'cause I don't think it's in here, um, that they felt after conversations with the Board of Health agent in Rochester that the refuse was not being disposed of properly and it was unhealthy, actually, I believe. I might be wrong about those words. And I obviously sent that immediately to our Board of Health agent and he had a conversation, I know you saw these emails, with the Board of Health agent in Rochester and that is not the case. As a matter of fact, he encourages it to be distributed individually because it helps with composting and everything else they do there. So he felt there was no violation. I'm sure, you know, if you look at the Deggens, um, they outline one, two, three, four, five, they feel conditions being violated. Um, one is the business hours, 'cause they claim that there's been dogs there before and after the regulated business hours, the trash pickup we talked about, the no grooming on-site, I think that was an issue that was caught very early on before, like, the first day she was open or something. Um, all dogs must be properly licensed by their home community, um-
We went through that, that, at the last meeting?
We did, I'm just telling you, and then the maximum of two dogs walked at a time, so, uh, you know. I don't know what to tell you.
Um-
I'm at a loss for words.
What did you, if, if you could just step up, I'd just like to ask you a question. I know that we had spoken about this, uh, before at the last meeting, but what were you gonna do with, uh, the dog trash? You know, instead of using the dumpster, you, you just felt that you could just use?
Well, I have a trash bag.
Excuse me, Stephanie, could you just please?
Stephanie Billings.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a trash, a big trash barrel and it has a, a big cover on it and I put a trash bag in there every, every week. And then I, every time somebody goes potty, I put it in there. And I'm literally only generating, it's like this much, and it's a hu, it's a big, you know, thirty-five gallon trash bag. So I've been bringing it to the dump on, either Friday, if he's home early, or Saturday mornings and we've been doing that the whole time. So that's what I, 'cause it's, for us to have a sticker, it's ten dollars a year for us to do, like, see trash pickup, uh, once a week is two hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year and I just being a fourth of a bag of trash, I thought it was gonna, um, cost.
I, I, I think that takes care of, I think we've looked at all the conditions that we had set up. I, I don't, maybe at one time there was a violation, we, I think we have gone over this, I think that, uh, I think that I've been satisfied that pretty much, uh, that, that everything that has been done is, uh, is fine now. But is, now, yeah, Will?
If I could, um, I don't, through you to Jack, um, modification of a condition.
Yep.
We can do that under this review because it, it was a review that we had already, already.
Put in.
The only, the only thing that I would, I read the emails from, um, the Abutter and, and also from the responses from, uh, the Board of Health agent and also with him. They were, excuse me, Rochester, they were very specific on, um, they would more prefer that it be placed in where their, all their compost is, 'cause it helps their compost pile and they can mix it on a daily basis, what have you. So I think with, with the follow-up from a separate entity, uh, other than what's been going on here in this town and stuff like that, I think that, that leads me towards that direction on modifying condition number ten, to allowing them to take that to their, um, under the recommendations of the memo that we received from Rochester and also from our own Board of Health agent, um, for the follow-up and I appreciate Tink doing that. I think it wa, it was important for us to understand, um, not only the concerns that, um, the, the abutting neighbors have, but also the concerns from the applicant, uh, not only because it's cost, I mean, there's a cost in doing business. That's a choices that we make. But, um, where it's an environmental thing and it's actually helping in a, in a certain way other than just being tossed in trash and them not being able to do that, it was, it was important to understand that end of it. So, um, other than that, I think that, um, the issue with your daughter walking a dog, um, if it's your dog, that's your dog, you can do what you want as far as I'm concerned, but if it's a customer's or a client's dog, absolutely not. I think that, um, we were pretty specific with that last time. I think that, um, we were pretty specific with that last time. I actually sat in a driveway twice this week. Nobody brought me treats, thanks anyways. But I didn't have any responses. I, I, I was just trying to, the suggestion of the noise end of it, and it was different times of the day, so I, I thought it was important for one of us to do that. I didn't make it aware to nobody, and they knock on your door or anything like that, so, um, I didn't, I didn't get any of that. I didn't get any noise or anything like that. And, um, I don't know, I mean, you have to respect the neighbors', their concerns, and they're greatly appreciated. The ACO has suggested that they have, you know, directed all of that. And there's a budding neighborhood dogs and stuff like that, so we understand. It's very difficult for us as a board, and I wanna be clear with everybody concerned, that for us to determine if it's your dog or somebody else's dog, it's, I don't even know how you guys do it, but it is what it is. So my intent would be to make a motion to, um, modify condition, condition number ten in referencing the, um, Board of Health memo from, uh, the Rochester and to allow them to comply with that. Other than that, um, also in my motion is, is not to have another review in a year. I don't think we've done it to anybody else in this town. I think we've beat this one to death. I think that as a board, we've applied and we've checked and cross-checked all the complaints, so, and, and all the conditions. And I haven't found, other than that one condition, number ten, that needed to be addressed. So that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Oh, we have a motion. So you feel that we don't have to, we have, we don't have to go through this?
The only modification is, is of condition number ten, is to modify that and for them to, um, to adhere by the Board of Health recommendations, um, from Rochester and allow them to bring it to the dump and be recycled in that certain location, other than ha, mandating a trash pickup. Other than that, all the other conditions stand and with no other review. That's my motion, to be clear.
Anybody have?
Well, I myself went by, I packed maybe three.
We need a second, just to be.
A second.
Did you? Okay, thank you.
So I, I myself drove down and packed maybe three houses away. It was between noon and two o'clock. And I, there were dogs barking. I can't for sure say that they were coming from, from you or, or anywhere else, but it, it was a normal day at, between noon and two, where you hear dogs bark. It wasn't, um, out of the limit. It was just a, a normal day. I can't even say that it was coming from your house. It wasn't that loud that it was upsetting or anything. Um, my only concern is number twenty-two, Will. Within two years from the state of issuance, a six-foot-high stockade fence shall be construct- constructed along the naughtily border of the backyard.
I didn't, I didn't, uh, change that. Um, they still have to comply with that condition.
Okay, but if they're not reviewed again and they don't comply, then?
Then we can bring them in. I mean, we've done that to other, other site plan reviews, other permits that we've issued, where people haven't complied at a certain time. That's up to the building enforcement officer to ensure that different conditions are met. Where this is a very high, visible, um, permit. I think everybody's watching it. They're aware that they're, that, that they will be going to that. There's also been times that other applicants have come in front of our board and have asked, due to financial restraints, if they could have a condition that they couldn't meet extended. We can always entertain that also. But they, at our last meeting, referred that that's their intent is to put up that fence, so.
Okay, so you understand that?
Absolutely, yep.
Condition, okay.
I was, I wanted to put it up this summer, but I didn't get as busy as I wanted to right away, so.
So you still intend on complying with that?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, I get money going on the savings account every single week, definitely.
Now, the only thing that I have to say, if.
I'm done, thank you.
Is that if we, if we vote on this tonight and we, uh, vote to approve, i- if the Dignans did or other neighbors had some complaints, they would go to the town administrator?
Well, obviously, if it was a dog complaint, they're supposed to go to the animal control officer. I know, I think Mr. Dignan left, but, uh, I think there's a lack of trust there, um, on their, on the neighbor's part. I don't wanna get into that, but even that is a town administrator issue. You don't employ the ACO, nor do you do anything about, with the ACO. This is a land use permit, not a, uh, an, an animal control permit. So any, any, and, and all the complaints I've gotten from them, either were sent directly to the town administrator's office or I sent them there. And they've responded accordingly, and I think at the last meeting, you saw the stack of stuff and, and the list the animal control officer gave you. And, and again, I'll reiterate, the animal control officer gave them a clean bill of health. As a matter of fact, it was excellent. Every box was excellent, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, jumped the gun on you.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right, under old business, uh, we have Reed Custom Soils, follow-up.
Yeah, I put this on the agenda only because, as you know, because of the timing of the asphalt plans, you already approved this with the condition that after review by Sean Martin, excuse me, and the fire department, all their, all their recommendations would be incorporated on new plans. I know Brian's here representing Bill Madden, but, um, just really quickly, you'll see in your packet a memo from the fire department, really saying that, um, he feels it does meet their emergency access requirements. He also listed the conditions that they're gonna require for any spacing, if there's any type A materials there, which I don't think that we're gonna be. And then you'll see a list of, of notes, amendments to the plan revisions that the, uh, town engineer would like. And then you'll see how GAF has addressed each one of these notes. And you'll see in your packets here right in front of you, actually, how they've incorporated into the plans. And I'm told that they're starting to do some earth mo, um, mo, earth landscaping now, trying to get it ready for the asphalt to come in. So I don't know if Brian can answer any questions you have, but I think they've complied with your condition. It was a little backwards. We had to do to get them in on time. But I think it was a very business positive mo, move you made, instead of having them possibly wait all winter, um, until, so you, you've got a business in six months, maybe five months earlier than normal, which is bravo to you.
And this was reviewed by all the public safety departments, too?
Yep, yep.
And so it's a go.
That's all. The only question I have through you, Mr. Chair, to, um, their representative, if you could. The conditions set forth by Sean Martin, maybe you can answer it, Jack, for him, gonna be incorporated in that. Did they have any issues with any of that?
No.
No issues at all?
I talked to Bill on Thursday or Friday, I can't remember what day, and he said they were gonna incorporate them all, and you'll see a list of how he did it. It's mostly just information he wanted on the plans.
Yep. I'm just reading the memo right now. I guess he answered for you. Thank you. No, I think that's a good thing. I think that, um, due to the restraints in their, in their business, having to relocate and everything, following suit with what we brought to town meeting last year, um, I think that this was a good move.
I do, too.
And they're gonna come in for a site plan review anyways, but I think it was a good.
Within six months, yeah.
Uh, no action here, just FYI stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, next under old business is Marion Drive. We request to release R and I monies.
Uh, Marion Drive, as you know, town meeting accepted it in June. It's passed mustard with Fussin' O'Neill and Billy Howleyman while he was still here. We have one thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents left in the review and inspection, and they'd like it back. And you'll see an, um, an email to that effect, and then you'll see the actual R and I account analysis on the second page.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, a motion to, um, refund Marion Drive, uh, requests for their R and I monies in the sum of one thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents payable to Nor, North Carver Business Park LLC.
Your motion second? You have a motion and a second? Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Boy, we might make the hockey game there, Will.
All right, uh, next, under old business is, uh, potential zoning amendments for the two thousand fourteen town meeting, including proposed medical marijuana facilities, accessory apartments, residential use and commercial buildings, North Carver landfill zoning signage in Morrissey Boulevard.
Every year I do this with you guys, um, and, um, I, I have a little tickler file, and probably starting right after tonight, I'll start at one for two thousand fifteen, and then, or you guys will say something at a meeting, how come we don't do this? How come we? And that's how these things happen. But, so I, I'd like to go. I'm not looking for action from you. I just want you to kinda give me direction. Do you want me to work on this up till January? So then we can start putting it together for the town meeting, or don't waste your time, keep going on something else. But the first one I have is the medical marijuana facilities, and I thought, um, since Mrs. Handlin chaired that, she might wanna discuss that a little bit.
Thank you, Jack. The bylaw is ready to be present. We've completed it. We've had quite a few meetings. We got together. We, um, had templates from a number of towns that we read, reviewed. We tweaked for our own use. And then we turned it over to, uh, Mr. Hunter and Mr. Tinkum, and they worked together on presenting a bylaw, and then they brought it back to us. And we went through it, we revamped it, we tweaked it, and I think we have a, a good bylaw to present. Uh, I think, is it complete at this time, Jack?
Uh, the committee voted on it, and your committee, actually, you appointed it.
Yeah, we voted. I, I think, I think you're done on that. I mean, unless you feel you need to move forward.
No, I, I, I don't have to do anything on this one, I don't think.
Okay.
I mean, for the public, what they're doing is, they have to do this because the laws, the voters of Massachusetts are requiring it. And we're gonna wa, going to allow them in the industrial A zone with all kinds of, um, buffering and certain, um, restrictions on, um, length from staycares and, um, schools and churches and things like that. But we did find the industrial A, and industrial A, I should tell you, is in North Carver, where the Ravenbrook landfill is, and also in South Carver, where Deacon's is. And, uh, you have to find a place. It has to be reasonably located, and I think they did. And I think they dotted all the i's and crossed the t's. The police chief is reluctantly in agreement with this. I'm sure he'd agree with me saying that. He understands what the voters said. He doesn't like it, but he understood.
He was on the committee.
That's kinda, he told us at every meeting.
At the, every meeting. And we had excellent attendance, everybody showed up at every meeting, so it went well.
Okay.
Do you want me to go down these?
I'll, I'll do that, Mrs.
Okay.
So that one's done. We'll just have it ready for February, and you guys hopefully will sponsor it. Um, the next one is the internally lit signs. You know, we've been approached by several gas stations, the new one in South Carver. I know that Cumberland Farms in North Carver, and maybe that's all, but even the old one in South Carver came in front of you, as have other people. And I thought, and I think it was one of you guys that had brought this up, should we just take the internally lit over so that, uh, so a company who just wants to do an internally lit sign doesn't have to come in front of you, then go to ZBA, then come back here, then get a building permit? We're talking, that, that takes a long time. I mean, your process alone is, is long enough, and ZBA's is, probably mirrors your process. So that could take up to six months, five months, for somebody just to get a sign. So you had talked about incorporating that into one-stop shopping, so to speak.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, the internally illuminated signs have been an issue since I've been on the board. We've had, as Jack has stated, we've had quite a few people that have come in front of us that have had to go to ZBA. And the most recent one would be the South Carver, um, new development, that gas station down there. They had to go down to ZBA to, to state their case, and they got approval. So I think that it's time that we look at, look at it and incorporate it in the site plan review. That way we can regulate it and see where we're at and see if it works in not only the neighborhood and the conditions of where they're at and the styles. I think we should look at it. That's my opinion.
I agree with you, Will.
'Cause I think technology's changed, so, uh, since, since, since that was done, so, uh, yeah, let's take a look at that.
I'll look at that, and I'll share it with ZBA. I put this in, residential units and commercial buildings. I was approached, and you'll see this in your packet, actually, from, um, the landmark building. That's where Cranberry Daycare is, and, oh, I can't remember who else is in there. Uh, Rooney's Barber Shop, are they still there?
Nope.
No, but they used to be here. Anthony, once again, would like to try and put two units on the second floor. Now, he met with his architect. You'll see a memo here. All fine and good. I told him he has to come in front of you, special permit. We make sure they're septic, there's water, there's parking, the whole nine yards. But he also had the concept of putting residential on the first floor. And no matter how I looked at the bylaw, in my opinion, that's not allowed. You allow single-family detached dwellings, and you allow townhouses, and you allow accessory units on the second floor. But nowhere can I find where you allowed on the first. Architect, I told him, I'm doing this anyway for you guys. He asked if I'd bring it up and see if that's something you wanna work on or had any work on.
Does anybody have any feelings about this?
I think that Jack should re, do some research on it, at least get more information. So if I have to make a decision, I can make a educated, informative decision.
I can, uh, give you my, my thoughts on this, Mr. Chair. When we had looked at, uh, initially looking at, uh, the idea, the con, concept of having residential above, uh, commercial, we were trying to look at that village end of it, trying to work with, give the opportunity for people to live and work in the same building area, per se, similar to they do at a lot of places around the Commonwealth. One thing that I do know from personal, um, people that I've spoken with, and I expressed this opinion to Jack earlier, so I just wanna make it public. Residential in a commercial development on the first floor will be troublesome. You can go anywhere from the parking arrangements, a commercial building trying to run a business, and a residential person fighting over the parking spots. Also, how are you gonna regulate, um, the children aspect of that in a commercial space? The hours of operation? The hours of operation, we're trying to encourage business and also the residential trying to work hand in hand. That'd be troublesome. Also, the business on the first floor with the noise end of it, I don't know if that'll work. I know that there's some places that I know people have tried this and have done it and it was a problem. So just a little food for thought for everybody, um, I don't have a problem with Jack looking into it to give us more information, but that's my three cents worth.
Thank you, Will.
I'm always open-minded, but...
Yeah, I think that's why they, they separate the residential on top, it kinda isolates it from the noise and.
Well, I, I understand, yeah, I understand and, and I even agree with Will, but, uh, Jack should also have the opportunity to do a little, as much research as possible and bring it back to us.
I'll kick it around, I don't mind.
Sure.
I, I, I hadn't thought of some of the things, I, I'm not an advocate for or against this, first off, when I came in here, I'm just, it came up, you know, in my daily business. And, um, you know, certainly, I told him I'd bring it to you and I have, and I, I hear what Will's saying. You know, I always try to accommodate people, you don't want people to have vacant units in their place. We, you know, I, I wanted to say we want taxes, we want use. Residential's not really tax positive, so. I'll, I'll kick it around, I don't mind that.
Thank you, Jack.
Um, the next one I had in my tickler file was kennels, you know, we just dealt with this and you don't, do you want more direction? Do you want more, more guidance on kennels and after what we've learned and have it actually be a bylaw or? I hate to even bring it up, to be honest with you, but I did have it in my folder, somebody brought it up once, I don't know who.
I didn't give any thought to it.
Okay, I don't need to do that one. I'll be easy. Uh, North Carver landfill, um, at the direction of the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, we've been, we actually went out to bid for, um, to put solar panels on the North Carver landfill. I think everybody thought that was a great idea. Unfortunately, the bid that they chose, um, our attorneys had to rule it, um, not qualified. And I can tell you why, um, they assumed that there would be no taxes with this because it's on town property selling the town electricity. And there is a loophole in the tax code that says if you have your own property and you're selling yourself electricity, you're not taxable. But because it's leased and you, the town would not own the panels, it will have to be taxed. And we had a phone conference with the chief assessor and town council and the assessor has now come to that conclusion, she was not, she was, thought it was tax exempt. And because of that, we're gonna have to go back out to bid, that's number one. Also, because of the new zoning bylaw, um, we don't allow solar panels in a BG zone. Why the landfill's zone BG, I'm not really sure, it's not like you're gonna put a business on a landfill. So I would like to either tweak the zoning for the solar to allow it on the landfill or just change the landfill to residential. I mean, a, a lot of towns have their own distinction for landfills, they have their own zoning. But it has to have, be zoned something and it can't be zoned nothing. And why it's business instead of residential makes no difference to me, other than that you can't put solar panels on it. So I'd like to work on that, one way or the other, either, but I think just changing it to residential and they'd still have to come in for a special permit and all that junk. Morrissey Boulevard, right before Mr. Hallianen left, he wanted to remind me that for some reason Morrissey Boulevard is not an accepted way. It's perfectly fine, I went on it not too long ago, it's just one of those loopholes. So, he asked him before he left, so, one of his last requests, I thought we'd better follow it, he'll find me if I don't. Um, and then, um, the last thing is at the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Belbin presented some, um, suggestions with accessory apartments and you had asked me to give them to the Board of Health and the Building Commissioner. The Building Commissioner did not have any comments, but you will see the comments from, um, the Board of Health. And essentially that the CMR that Mr. Belbin was referring to and wanted to incorporate into the bylaw is for rentable properties and not, um, not accessory units. Is essentially what Mr. Tinkum's saying here, but I did promise to follow up on that. And I know the next on the agenda is the same thing to talk about, so.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Rosemary.
I believe accessory apartments have been brought up at the last three or four town meetings.
Yes, ma'am.
And it actually went nowhere. So I think at this point, I don't, I don't feel that you should be doing any more research on accessory apartments. I think we've exhausted that.
I agree. I think with, uh, the information that was provided to us, and Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, um, we, we tried sponsoring between the, uh, planning board and with Bob, working with Bob two years in a row, and then a petition article that kinda went nowhere at all last year. I think that it's, it's pretty well been beaten pretty bad. I appreciate the information that Bob has given us, I mean, we can, it, things change. I think it's important that we look at it all the time, but as far as bringing it again this year, um, I don't see any reason why. Um, unless Bob has, um, a lot more information and I'm not, I'm not willing, me personally, I'm not willing to try to sponsor something that isn't gonna be a dramatic change. I couldn't even comment on it last year, I didn't, I didn't know how to even go, so, that's my opinion.
It, it, it didn't get much response at the, uh, at the town meeting that we had the last time we presented it, uh, the last time Bob presented it, so.
Yep.
I got that, man.
I think we forget.
Okay, that's it. So I got five, four things to work on.
Thank you, Jack.
All right, uh, next is, uh, an appointment, uh, Robert Belbin, accessory apartments.
You'll see, Bob handed this to me a while ago, um, it's in color, it's black, green and red.
I said that earlier.
New information that I have to present here to you guys, maybe this will change your mind. I filed, uh, an appeal with the, uh, Superior Court and the judge decided with the zoning board, which I found was really bizarre, but no matter what, I just wanted you guys to be clear what the judge actually stated and what the interpretation by the zoning board and the judge, which could turn around, it's not.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Um, and just for clarification, did you, did you file an appeal, is there an?
I filed an appeal and I already told council I do not intend an appeal.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't in a litigation thing, that's all.
No, there's none, there's none there, like, uh,
Okay.
You stopped me before.
I just wanna be, I just.
Excuse me, Bob, could you also identify yours?
Sorry, Robert Belbin, twenty-sixth Gate Street.
Nobody knows you, Bob.
I know, it's, hey, it's okay, it's the beard now. So, just wanna let you, um, fill you in what happened, okay? The judge stated here, um, that with my addition, it's an addition, okay? That the doors that separate my house to my addition, there, I can test that. They're not locking doors, okay? Uh, it's not a separate dwelling, okay? But this is what he stated, which is, like I said, you guys take it from there.
Do you have something that you can reference, 'cause I was reading through the actual decision?
Yeah, um, I think it's, I think it's page thirteen, I think it is.
It's in your correspondence.
Yeah, I'm just trying to follow along with Bob.
Page thirteen, um, I didn't bring it with me, 'cause I typed my own little notes here, okay? But what he said is, uh, quote, "This is consistent with the intent of the bylaw that states the purpose of the bylaw is, is, quote, 'Enabling elderly and/or handicapped, just fifty-five or older, persons to provide small additional dwelling units to rent or reside in.'" Okay, that's what our bylaw says. Goes further. "The accessory apartment is not meant to be a separate dwelling closed off from the single-family dwelling." "It is meant to enable owners of single-family dwellings to, quote, 'share space in the burdens of homeownership.'" The judge further stated that "The intent of this condition is to ensure that the apartment is accessory to the main house and not a standalone unit, which would be inconsistent with the intent of the bylaw." So, this interpretation of our bylaw, which I have here, um, where it does state, "For the purpose of enabling elderly or handicapped, fifty-five or older, to provide small additional dwelling units to rent or reside in without adding to the number of buildings in the town." That's what our bylaw says, additional dwelling units. It further states on our bylaw, under A, "Enabling elderly or handicapped owners, owners of single-family dwellings to share space in the burdens of homeownership." Just the, so that would mean the elderly person owns the home and they wanna share space with somebody else, which would have to be elderly or handicapped. And then it says, B, "Providing an alternative housing option for elderly or handicapped persons." That's what our bylaw says. Okay, our bylaw still says that "An accessory apartment is incorporated within or attached to a single-family dwelling and is subordinate part of the single-family dwelling and complies with the criteria below." Now, this judge determined here that, uh, the interpretation of our bylaws, shared space is not a separate dwelling. And if shared space is not a separate dwelling, then what is it? Is it a single-family home? Because if it's, if it's shared space, it's attached or within, and if you recollect, at the last meeting I provided you diagrams of houses and designs and whatnot, uh, right there, that if it's a locked door, and Mr. Tinkum has a different opinion of this, okay? Under that, chapter four-ten, uh, CMR four-ten, whatever, okay? Which he says doesn't pertain to this, but I'd actually like to turn around and cite on that.
Hold on one second, Bob, if you could, 'cause I, I just read this whole condition D.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm a little confused in your interpretation compared to what I'm reading, I just wanna, your... I think this is a follow-up on this condition, so I'd, I'd like to read it for the people, uh, the residents and maybe it's just the way I just read this, 'cause now I'm really confused in what you just told me and what I'm reading here. It says here, "Condition D requires that the interior space between the dwelling and the accessory apartment not be closed off by a door otherwise or permanently sealed." This is consistent with the intent of the bylaw that states that the purpose of the bylaw as "Enabling elderly or and/or handicapped person to provide small additional dwelling units to rent or reside in without adding the number of buildings in the town or sub- substantially altering the appearance of the town, of the town for the reasons of A, enabling an elderly or handicapped owner of a single, single-family dwelling unit to share the space in the burdens of the homeownership or B, providing an alternative housing option for the elderly and handicapped person," unquote. Then it says, the very next line, "The plaintiff argues that this condition violates general law, chapter forty A, section three, which states, quote, 'No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall regulate or restrict the interior area of the single-family residential building,' unquote, master law forty A, section three." Then it says, "The accessory apartment is not meant to be a separate dwelling closed off from a single family." This is where I'm, I'm problem with, because it seems like this is still the plaintiff's argument, which will be you, Bob, stating your case to the court. "Is meant to enable owners of single-family dwelling to share space in the burden of ho- homeownership." "The condition does not regulate the interior of the plaintiff's house, which has swinging doors that separate to the plaintiff-in-law apartment from the rest of the residence." "The intent of this condition is to ensure that the apartment is, is an accessory to the main house and not standalone unit, which is, which would be inconsistent with the intent of the bylaw." Then it says, "Upon review of the records and the evidence presented at the trial, the court finds condition D is a permissible ex- exercise of the ZBA authority." There's two different arguments going on here, number one, the what was presented in, and this is my interpreting, condition D, and then Bob's claiming his presentation of his interpretation of the bylaw. And then the conclusion would be, "Upon the review of the records of the evidence presented at the trial, this court finds that condition D is permissible by the ZBA authority." That's where I'm having a problem with it, 'cause you state in one statement, which I understand your statement and I read it very clear in the document that's provided to me by, I guess it's the decision, Jack?
Yes.
And that's not what you just explained to us, unless I'm reading it wrong. But it seems like the court stated in this, in this case that, in this particular instance where Bob is trying to interpretate for us, that is Bob's argument, is that section right there where it's stated, the plaintiffs argue. And then what the court finds is what says that the ZBA was in, within its rights, under condition D. That's just my interpretation.
And, and you know, it's somewhat, well, somewhat you're right, but
Yep.
what I'm hearing is the bylaws can be changed whatever way, shape or form, all right? This didn't go to appeal, so it's not setting into law that this has to be followed, but I think that this interpretation of shared space, this shared space language.
I'm following you.
Is, um, really arbitrary to an extent, in my opinion, it's arbitrary. Because if it's shared space and it's not intended to be an accessory apartment or a separate dwelling unit, then what is it called? Really, I mean, i- if you really think about it, I, this is my opinion of it.
Yeah, I got you, Bob.
This is my opinion, is that we have a bylaw that says, and this is what I discussed before, is that you have, I'll use this as a guide for you guys to see, you have a lot, sixty thousand square feet, here. And our bylaw says that you can build up to thirty percent of that lot, which would be eighteen thousand square feet. A building of a house that you can build, that's what our bylaw says. So if this is sixty thousand square feet, a third of it is this much space. Really seriously, looking at this, now, our bylaw says that before you go to the zoning board, okay, for an accessory apartment that's over eight hundred square feet, that you need ZBA approval. But if you really look at it, that our bylaws also state that you can put a building up to thirty percent, which is eighteen thousand square feet. So there's a conflict there, because if we're just sharing space with somebody in your house and it's not a separate dwelling unit, then isn't it in addition to your house?
But I, but I just, I, I'm not gonna argue with it, I'm just trying to under- understand the court's decision here on condition D. Condition D, and it seems like they were pretty clear that they agreed with condition D.
Right, they, they agreed that it was reasonable, the problem is that had I appealed it, which I think I could've, and I would've had good cause, but I figured, you know what? We'll let this go and I'll bring it to you guys and I'll bring it to the town to really, it's, it's quite confusing to the extent of saying that we have an accessory apartment that clearly says an additional dwelling unit, where this judge's opinion is that our bylaw
Meets the requirement.
Wasn't meant to be a dwelling unit, a separate dwelling unit.
I didn't get that. I just read it again, I didn't get that.
He stated that.
Where?
It's in there, um...
And, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna rehash your, your thing, but if you're trying to make, make a, um, indication to this board that we need to tweak because it was an interpretation of the court, that our bylaw in some, some way or fashion was flawed, then yeah, that's good information for us, and we need to see that, it needs to be very clear. And, and I, I agree with you that your interpretation of what you think is totally different than mine. And totally different from the courts and everybody else, but I think it should be looked at, but I, I've read this section D again, and I can't pick that out, and maybe just 'cause I'm not an attorney.
Let me
Yeah, go ahead.
Through my, my spiel here, all right? Um, so, the shared space to a single family dwelling, wouldn't that be in addition?
Where is that?
Dwelling. If you're going to put in addition to your house, all right, wouldn't it be in addition if it's not an apartment?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find out where that would be, Bob, in here. 'Cause I wanna be specific, this was good information, whether you were for the appeal or Bob's going to the courts or against it, or whatever it is, whoever sits there. But the information that's provided in this document from everything that
And I provided that to you guys.
Bob has gone, gone through, is good information for the town, but if there's something that's flawed, that's very clear, and I haven't found it yet, and I, I appreciate you trying to bring it to us, but I just wanna, I'm not gonna go my interpretation was, I don't wanna go back to and change our bylaw where we contradict the ruling of a, of a court. You know, if the court states that, you know, our bylaw was flawed because of this specific phrase, then yeah, it's our job to change it.
No, it's not the, you, you're misinterpreting it, well, okay? The judge sided with the zoning board.
Okay.
Which is fine, whatever, all right? I don't have the money to be fighting them anymore. I just don't have the money, I don't have the time, okay? I'm done with this, whole process, okay? What I'm saying here is that this is not law. What the judge said is not law. He's just interpreted what the zoning board
Yep.
Is interpreting as what our bylaws are saying.
Which is the same as your argument would be, what your interpretation of the bylaw, where you've brought to this board numerous occasions where you think it should be changed, which is important.
Correct, but the problem is, this judge now interpreted it a little differently than what is actually written in our bylaws.
Can you be specific on that?
And what I, just what I wrote before, okay, and I read it aloud here, is that, um, he said that "The accessory apartment is not meant to be a separate dwelling closed off from the single family dwelling." That's what he says in his decision. And if you
That, that's where I say that that was your argument, 'cause that's where it shows it in condition D.
No, that's, that's, that's his words, not my words. That's his words there, but what I wanna go through is that we have a definition of what an accessory apartment is.
Okay.
Okay? Now, I just gotta find it. Um... Okay, accessory apartment, this is what the definition for accessory apartment in the back of the book says. It says, "Shall mean a dwelling unit of not more than eight hundred square feet located in an existing residential structure in accordance with provisions of twenty-two-sixty." So, what this is saying is that the accessory apartment is a different dwelling. It's an additional dwelling unit to a dwelling unit. Okay, that's what it's saying, that's what our bylaws say. But the judge is saying that our bylaw doesn't say that. Okay? This, this is where there's some confusion here, that we need to resolve this confusion, because either you have an additional dwelling unit or you don't have a dwelling unit. And if you don't have a dwelling unit, then what is it called? What he's saying is it's shared space. What he's interpreting is shared space. Now, the only part of shared space in our bylaws deals with owner, elderly owners or handicapped owners of property.
I don't see any place where he said shared space. Oh, I do, excuse me.
I didn't make it up.
No, I got it, I just, I needed to find it, Bob.
That's on page, page thirteen.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so, like I said, it, it's that point of saying, okay, shared space, well, what is shared space? All right, and, and it's, like I said, I don't wanna make it complicated here, but the bottom line here is that my opinion and yours may be different.
Yep.
Okay, my opinion is family is family, and if it's shared space and it's shared space with your family, it's still family. Okay, therefore, if you're gonna build an addition to your house, that you should be allowed to build the addition to your house up to thirty percent of your property. Okay, 'cause if it's shared space and it's not a separate dwelling, it's one dwelling unit. That's what it is. Those doorways of not being locked, okay, and having free flow access going back and forth, okay, that makes it a single family home. Not two separate dwelling units, okay, and I had the bill, the health agent to my house. He even said that my addition fails to meet the criteria as a dwelling unit, because it doesn't have locked doors, and it doesn't have, um, a sink. Talking to him further, he said that, that's not the, what he interprets CMR four-ten. Okay? But I'd just like you to read four-ten. All right? It says, um, "Under the scope, no person shall occupy as owner, occupant, or let, rent, okay, to another for occupancy, any dwelling, dwelling unit, mobile dwelling unit, or rooming unit for the purpose of living, sleeping, cooking, or eating therein, which does not comply with the requirements of one-oh-five CMR four-ten." All right, where this health code says that a separate dwelling unit, in order to be a separate dwelling unit, you have to follow these laws. This is what I'm saying. If I come back to you guys and say that I'm going to ask that we include these guidelines into our bylaws, number one, are you guys interested in, in hearing that, to say, you know what, a dwelling unit should follow all these rules in these guidelines under the health and safety code? 'Cause that's the intent of zoning, zoning's to protect the health and safety and welfare of the community.
And I also think that that's the job of the board of health.
You know what?
To enforce his regulations, not ours.
Right, it's enforcement. Okay, but our bylaws, there's, there's two different things here that can be intermingled because they are intermingled in other things, okay, within our bylaws, that the health agent has control over, even though they're in our bylaws. Or the planning board has control over other than something else, okay? So there are, like I said, it's a fluid document, our bylaws. So that's where I'm going at with this, it says, willing to entertain this, to say, hey, let's follow these, because if you follow these and you follow the judge's opinion of shared space here, that it's not supposed to be a separate dwelling unit, it's only supposed to be shared space, then it's just a single family home. In all, really, in all actuality, and there has been a prior court decision that said, you can have numerous kitchens in a single family home. It's already been fought in court. That's, you can have two, three, four kitchens in your house in a single family home. It's allowed. Okay, because it's a single family home. Okay, so, with that being said, all right, I think you should really look at the definitions of dwelling, dwelling units, okay, and really think about, is the accessory apartment bylaw meant to share space and not be a separate dwelling unit? Is it, if it's not a separate dwelling unit, then you're sharing space. Now, if you're sharing space, should, in our definition of family is any number of individuals? There's no set number, it could be anybody that lives in a single family home, okay, of what family is. I have a different interpretation of family, which I tried to present before of what family is, okay? I think the foundations of our government, our homes has always been blood, marriage, adoption. Those are the foundations of family, okay? And family you're supposed to take care of. Okay, so, my feeling is, no matter who's living in your house for family members, if they're related by blood, marriage, or adoption, it's still a single family home. It's still a single family home. A single dwelling unit. That's what it is. Okay, so, what I actually did is, using this quote, "shared space," um, definition, this is for your information, this is new. That's why I said, don't bother with the other one, all right, 'cause this is since I've gotten the decision. Okay, this, I, I want you to take a look at this.
Thank you.
All right, this is about shared space, and what I put it as, "shared space bylaw." Okay, where it would be a definition, uh, to be attached to the accessory apartment or as a separate one, where you really define what shared space is. Okay, these are, these are my, this is mine, this is what I wrote out, okay? Interested in hearing other people's opinions, okay, because I can tell you for a fact that the, um, there was a house down on Rochester, Rochester Road, the one across from Edelweiss. Okay, they have a house, small cape, and they wanted to put an addition. The addition is twice the size of what the regular house is. It's huge, three-car garage, it's got a door that faces the street, um, it's a huge addition, it's three stories in the back, all right, it shows the, the garages and the floor there, uh, for it. And that house is huge on that lot, but it's well below, excuse me, the thirty percent of what our bylaw said. Okay, but that's a single family home, even though it's huge. All right? My house is a single family home. That's what it is. Everyone that lives in my house is related by blood or marriage is a single family home, parents, period. That's my opinion, you're never gonna turn around and change my opinion of what I have. Okay, everyone that lives in my house, related by family. Using what the judge said about shared space, I mean, Rosemary, didn't you say that your mother lived with you?
My mother lives with me.
She lives with you, okay?
In my house.
In your house, okay, so she shares space with you, correct?
Yes, she does.
Okay, how much space does she share? Is it over eight hundred square feet?
That's irrelevant.
No, I'm just, but I'm just trying to compare apples to apples here.
It's just irrelevant.
Well, I, I kinda disagree, well.
That's okay.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, okay? The idea here is that your family that lives in your house, you have a duty to protect their health, safety, and welfare, okay? And by introducing shared space, what this judge did, because the only part of shared space comes in if someone's elderly or handicapped that owns their house. If it's shared space and it's not a dwelling unit, it's still a single family home. That, that's my opinion, and I've talked to numerous other people, and they feel the same way around this town that says, wait a second here, if it's not a separate dwelling unit and it's quote, "shared space," that isn't it still a single family home? It's something for you guys to think about, all right? And I'd like, I'd like your comments on that shared space.
We'll have to take a look at the, all of this. I mean, I noticed that you have a thing here, no variance is needed for required setbacks, uh, dimensionally required. I don't know how, I, I, I don't, you still have to obey the setback requirement.
No, 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 I, I had a hard time wording that, I'll totally, hard time wording that. The intent was, is that, like we said before, okay, if this is the street, this is frontage here, you gotta be at least fifty feet back from frontage. You have to be thirty feet, I think it was, from the sides and fifty feet from the back. You have to comply with that.
Right.
All right, because like, s- some people have had to go to zoning board because they wanna be fifteen feet from their lot line. Okay, so what this would say is, you have to follow within this, okay? To really say, you know what, you're really, we don't want you moving in closer to your neighbor here on either side. Okay, hm? Do you understand?
Yeah, you can't do that, yeah, I
Well, you can with a variance. The zoning board can give you a variance.
Right, exactly.
For it, but that, that was my intent with that, I didn't know how to word it the right way, okay?
So what do you plan on going with this? Are you going to town meeting, or what do you, are you
Well, I'm giving you guys an opportunity.
Now, you're changing things, you know, every time we see it, but I mean, what are you gonna, what are you, what are you gonna go with this?
This is new, like I said, this is new.
Is this just information for us to take a look at and?
To take a look at, give me your opinions, give me your thoughts. You may not be forward for, for changing the accessory apartment. Like I said, my opinion is accessory apartment is for people not related to you, my own personal opinion, and it's a separate dwelling unit. That's my opinion. It's a separate dwelling unit, and it's not really for your family members. Okay, if you're gonna have shared space, which this is what the interpretation is, and if this is the interpretation, 'cause I have to say, when the accessory apartment bylaw came into effect here, I wasn't a resident, but I was actually in town meeting that day, I sat up in the back and I listened, and at no time, if I remember correctly, did I ever hear anybody say that i- it's gonna be shared space.
Can I ask you a question, Bob?
Sure, go right ahead.
Those two pieces of paper that you're holding up?
Yes, ma'am.
Are they to scale?
Huh? This is sixty thousand square feet.
To scale?
This is sixty-five thirds, thirty percent, thirty percent thirds.
Have you made those to scale? Are those just two pieces of paper that you picked up that you're demonstrating with?
This is sixty thousand square feet, okay? Our bylaw says that you can build, sorry, up to thirty percent of your property.
But have you made that sixty thousand square feet to scale?
I want us to know, is that
Folded in thirds, I folded it in thirds. I folded it in thirds. I mean...
I just don't want the viewers at home to get the wrong idea if it's not to scale.
Well, I mean,
He's assuming thirty percent.
I, I understand.
Thirty percent, that's, that's what you
I don't like to assume when I have to make a decision.
No, and that's what I, thank you very much for bringing that up, but it's really thirty percent. Okay, it's very close, okay, even if I folded this over
It's okay.
A little bit, all right, fold it over like that, it's still. All right, see?
And you meet the setback requirements now.
Listen, but it still would do it the same way, I mean, if it's thir- fifty, fifty, and thirties on either side, but think about it, that's a big, big house. That would be a big house, eighteen thousand square feet on a sixty thousand square foot lot.
Well, that is determined by other things too, it, it depends upon where you can put your well and septic system and how close those things have to be to your foundation, so there are the other limiting factors that, that go along with this.
But if, if you have a bigger lot, you have a longer space, you can have a bigger house. It's all relative, 'cause it's not in square footage, it's in percentage, that's the way our bylaw says. It's in percentage.
Well, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at all this information. You presented us with a lot of information, and, you know, as far as, and you're always welcome to come here to, to, to update us on, on different things as they, as they happen, but
I, I do intend, Mr. Chairman, to bring something to town meeting. I do intend
Which you have the right, is under citizen's petition.
Something closer to shared space bylaw than, than what I tried to make any changes, all right, where, like I said, but I'd like your opinions on this to go forward. All right, because, like I said, my interpretation of shared space clearly is, shared space is shared space, it's in addition to your house. Okay, if it's in addition to your house, then really, you, as long as you follow the setback requirements, then, then you really shouldn't have to get a special permit to have your family members live in your house. You shouldn't have to go before the zoning board, unless you're gonna go exceed the, the building or whatnot of what's required. Okay, and, um, in, in closing now, I know you guys wanna get out of here, all right, is that also within this decision here, the judge brought up about where my front door is located? Okay, now, this is a total change to our bylaws. Total change. Because our bylaws under frontage says from the street layout line to whatever the building is, faces that street. What the judge turned around and interpreted is that where my doorways are is considered frontage. The front of my house, that's considered the front of my house. That's what the judge determined, that those doors on my, that face the side of my property, here, that faces the side of the property, that, that's the front of my house.
But, Mr. Chairman, I, I didn't read that part, it's probably in here, that's a yes and a no. But, Mr. Chairman, I, I didn't read that part, it's probably in here, that's a yes and a no. They're two different things, where your front of your house is, can be anywhere, in my opinion, you could have that in the back. That's the front of, where you're putting your front door, the frontage is from the street to the building. The frontage is off the street, not off the building.
That's the, the, yeah, the building doesn't determine the frontage, it's, it's the definition of what a lot is, and.
Right, but, under the accessory apartment bylaw, it says that, the door has to be on the side or the back of the building.
That's a different thing.
The side or the back of the building, okay, well. Where do you turn around and say, what are we following, is, is that part of the bylaw on the accessory apartment? Are we now turning around and saying that, frontage, relationship to this accessory apartment bylaw? Is where the, the door, the door is located? Main entranceway is located, alright, is that what we're talking about here, because that's, what? Excuse me?
I said, I, I don't know at this point, so many issues have been brought up about different things, it's getting overwhelming and confusing.
Just because the bylaw, I know it says it's gotta be in the side or the back, that, that's about an accessory unit. It has nothing to do with the frontage of the street. Frontage of the street is a setback issue to a structure, where the front door is, doesn't matter. Unless it's an accessory apartment, and then you have to abide by the bylaw.
But where do you, who determines where the front or the side or the back is going to be? Because you, you can't have something arbitrary, cause my, my, my reason for this.
I don't think it's arbitrary at all, it's, the building commissioner would see the building, see where the front door is, that's the front of the building.
Okay.
Front of the building, not the frontage, front of the building.
So I wanna make this clear, is that, there was another case that the zo- zoning board heard. With the Betty Whimpers case, where her property, no, no.
Please, please don't bring up other people's names here.
Alright, down on this.
That's fine, thank you, I appreciate them.
Her property was the same, long narrow property, okay? House is long and narrow like this, okay, garage faces the street, the doors are here. And the zoning board said that, this is the side of their building, her doors are on the side, here. That, that's dealing with frontage, frontage is up here, the doors are over here, this is side, this is the side. So you can't have two, two definitions here dealing with two different things.
I, I don't, I don't think they, no.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I'm good with this.
Yeah, we can't go on all night long, I, I just.
I told you that was the last thing, I just, then you really have to take a look at that, say, well, which, which is which? Okay, any other questions, comments, issues?
No, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Alright, where, other business, uh, planning board notes. Anybody have?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm also, thank you.
Alright, uh, planners' notes.
Be very quick, I did have a meeting, um, with the new owners of the Whitworth property, Stone Cranberry. I met with the attorney and the owner, Bob Dellholm. Um, saying all the good things, the right things, he does wanna do an industrial park there, hallelujah, can't wait. Um, he is also looking at, um, some of the properties surrounding that, to help move his vision, so to speak. Um, I know he met with the Board of Health on Friday, I couldn't make it Friday, um, and.
I apologize, Zach, I didn't make it.
Oh, that's right, you were gonna go, um, very similar conversation, uh, we're keeping a close eye on this one, we wanna make sure the right stuff happens there. So far, so good, uh, two other quick things, um. As I know the chairman knows, and Will knows, there was a discrepancy in town, at the last town meeting, with a town meeting voted on one budget. On the article two, for planning board salaries, but for some reason, it got lost in the shuffle and it wasn't in your budget. And I did talk to the town administrator, I talked to FinCom Chair, and I talked to the Meg, uh, the accountant. All the documents are now done, and I'm waiting to hear from the FinCom Chair, they gotta do a transfer to get it in there, it was certainly the intent of town meeting, it just. We didn't have a town administrator or an accountant at the time, and for some reason it got left off. So, um, he said that he'd probably take care of it, I think it's gonna be December second, their next meeting, but he's gonna let me know and they'll take care of it.
Okay.
Um, last thing, have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you also.
Uh, approval of the minutes of October fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
They're not there.
We have those, they're, they're not in our package.
Invisible ink.
Good job, so we can't vote on those tonight. Uh, we'll go on to correspondence.
I just quickly, I, I, Bob had given me the decision, I put it in there, and then we talked about it. And then lastly, um, we're starting a newsletter, this is through BDC on, um, we're calling it Refreshing News. We're gonna feature a business that's growing, and a new business every week, every month. And we're gonna try to get this out as often as possible. I have some formatting issues I was challenged with, and thank God my intern solved them for me, cause I couldn't figure it out. But, um, I think it's a great idea, that's it.
It's really a nice fly-in, very nice.
Beautiful. Kathy did this?
No, the intern.
The intern, I wouldn't do that to Kathy. Very nice, very nice, uh, so that's, I guess we're on to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, have a great Thanksgiving.
Everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving.